Best Friends has entered into a grant with Rankin County. Thus far, we have received ninety-two thousand two hundred dollars in grant funds. These are to reduce the cost of adoptions. These are to build a new cat house that we have discussed. Forty thousand of it is to build a new cat house, which we are hopefully going to be starting to build on within the next couple of weeks. In addition to the hands-on education, Best Friends has sent employees from Rankin County to different trainings. They brought Barry Vaughn, Deborah Murphy, and David Lachuga all to Orlando for a week-long training session on how to be, how to run a shelter better, how to be a better animal control officer. And they've been able to come back and give that knowledge to everybody back here who was working over there. And as a result of Best Friends' work and effort, we have gotten to, and this is on page three of the brochure, we've gotten to a seventy-one point seven percent save rate. And what does that mean? By having a ninety percent or above save rate for a year, we would be classified as a no-kill shelter. And that is the goal, we want to be in that shelter. And if you notice, the numbers are even better but for one little dip in June. For July, August, September, October, November, these are all above the ninety percent save. And we have gotten to the point where the overwhelming majority of animals that come in are adopted out. We have started a foster program where foster parents keep them and don't overwhelm the shelter as much. Best Friends wants to continue and will continue with their assistance with the shelter. They make recommendations on SOPs, they make recommendations on community involvement and pamphlets that we can hand out to the community to assist in better pet care and not having to do it on nursery rooms. So just wanted to take this moment and this opportunity to thank them on behalf of the Sheriff's Department and allow the board to know exactly what they've been doing over the past eighteen months or so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Glad to have you.
Yeah, it sounds like y'all are doing a good job and we appreciate what y'all do. You know, for us, it sounds like it's kind of picking a program up a little bit and helping us out. I just want to thank y'all for what y'all are doing for the county and we're greatly involved and want to see it continue to do better. Thank y'all.
We also appreciate the funding. Yep, we appreciate the funding. Much of the new construction is going to be a result of Best Friends' willingness to participate financially with the county. So thank you guys on behalf of all the citizens of the county. We appreciate it. I know the sheriff appreciates it and we're grateful for the participation.
Is that all we have under public comments? Anybody else?
Mr. President, I have one public comment.
Yes, sir.
I had a conversation with Rankin County School District. And they wanted to thank Brian Grantley and his crew, the LC, for the way that they work with the schools and the weather situations like we've had last week and maybe again next week. And before we go into this next week, I just want to reach out and say that we appreciate Rankin County and we appreciate them as well, I think. I think we have a very good working relationship with Dr. Sanders and his crew. And anyhow, they wanted to thank you and your crew for the outstanding work that you did.
Thank you, Brian, for what you do. All right, old minutes, old business.
No open.
No need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January sixth.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Jay seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Getting better.
Consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look over and any questions on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent.
Second.
Scott made a motion to approve, Steve seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Stacy McNish, the tax assessment.
Good morning.
Good morning.
One simple item, under A, petitions for change of assessment on twenty-four real property assessments.
Make a motion. Second.
Jay made a motion, Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I do, hey Stacy, I do have a question. Of course, all of us are getting calls on some of the assessed values. If someone, let's say theirs goes up from last year to this year, say forty-five percent or so, is there, are y'all able to work with them or is that something set in stone to maybe do it over two years?
Well, we can't spread it over two years, but what we can do is if someone has an issue or disputes their value and they can present us with something that proves we are incorrect, we can take a look at it and issue a request to you guys.
Okay.
I don't think that's the issue. I don't think, I mean, when you ask them about that, it's not that. It's just that they were not prepared to go up nearly fifty percent with their own, you know, that's more what it is. And I always refer them to Craig, you know, he's got the money to loan them.
Look, I'm just happy to hear y'all are getting some calls.
You know, Craig's a lawyer.
Absolutely, at competitive rates, Steve.
He's a lawyer.
Yes.
We're not blaming anybody, we're just wanting to know if there's a better way. Because I mean, like Steve said, I mean, people are surprised because they've been paying this amount for three or four years and put money aside to pay this year and then it goes up forty, fifty percent.
Stacy, can I jump in, right? Just give you guys a couple of talking points as you encounter constituents that have questions. Number one, we've talked about this at length. We are mandated by state law to provide valuations to establish values of real property all across this county. And also, it also applies to personal property to some degree, but that's businesses, right? But homeowners can expect routine adjustments to value as the real estate market reflects higher values. Part of what it means to live in a county that is safe, that has good government, that has a healthy business climate and has excellent schools, is that people want to move here. That forces real property values to go up because people are demanding real estate to be able to locate here. Is that clear? And because of that, we can expect there to be increases in real property all across this county. Stacy is mandated by state law to track that and to make our values reflect what the market values are. And so there's going to be increases in values. This board has chosen, in its wisdom, not to raise millage. Nobody raised any taxes, this board didn't. And so the value increase that Stacy has to account for is why the tax bill went up. Okay, so I wanted to make that clear to everybody. There's also a process that the state legislature put in place that lets folks who feel aggrieved by their new tax bill to address that tax bill. It's a process. They have to file some sort of documentation with Stacy, she just mentioned that. Any homeowner in Rankin County that wants to challenge that tax assessment can do so, they just have to follow that process. Ms. Stacy will help them walk through what that process is and what information would be required for somebody to challenge that. And then eventually, a challenge can make its way. If it can't get worked out with Ms. Stacy directly, and I suspect that it can be in the vast majority of these situations, she and her team will make sure that folks in the county that want to object, that have a problem, can be heard. I think they'll be satisfied with how that part of the process works. But let's just say somebody is still not satisfied even after they've worked with Ms. Stacy and her team. They have the right to come in and address it directly to you guys.
Oh, they already have.
Yep. I'm talking about in a formal board meeting. And there's, that process will take place later this year where that can be addressed.
And I think it's important too, when you're talking to your constituents, just to point out, you know, that we can remain, you know, we can value these properties anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred and fifteen percent of market value. And if you go in and look, we're staying in the lower range of that. And it's just a result of what's occurred nationally, really. But, you know, this is a state issue, as he said, and so it's not just Rankin County. And me and my team did work really hard this last year trying to stabilize and bring those, you know, that increase a little closer together, so we weren't looking at these extremes. And so, but we, you know, our office, we're taking calls and visitors daily and we're happy to sit down with them and talk through. And a lot of times, they just want an explanation to understand it. And so certainly, please direct them our way and we're happy to explain to them.
All right, thank you. Thank you, and I'd like to thank you for the job y'all are doing. I've had some phone calls myself and like I said, they went in your office and, you know, after they've talked with people in your office, been satisfied, said that y'all were very helpful. So I just want, you know, pass that along. I know you probably don't get very much positive right now, especially this time of the year. You know, but I did want to pass that along.
Thank you, we really do. Y'all have a great staff, we have a great staff and that assessor's office work.
Yeah, thank you, Stacy. One last thing, gentlemen, and I don't want to belabor this point, but bear in mind that many of our homeowners may not yet know exactly what has happened with respect to the taxes because they don't get the tax bill. Tax bill goes to a mortgage company. They may find out at some point that they hadn't found out yet that their mortgage company is going to require them to pay extra into their escrow accounts to cover the new tax bill. We may start getting phone calls when all of that documentation hits. Just wanted to keep everybody aware of that.
Right. All right, next we have, I don't believe Mike Harrison is here, so Mr. Parker, I believe is going to take his position.
Let me start by making it clear with the camera rolling, I'm not Mike Harrison. Mr. Jackson, could the minutes be like that?
Thank you. I believe you got a little less hair on your head.
That's right.
Yeah.
There's a lot of differences, but I will.
Yeah, I just noticed the hair.
Yeah, right, I understand. Item A is a request for approval of AT&amp;T utility permit for burial and buried fiber along Lila Street and Highway forty-three in District Three.
Make a motion, first.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is a request for an AT&amp;T utility permit for fiber cable along and across Stump Ridge Road between Mount Hill and two fourteen Stump Ridge Road. That's the District Four.
Most approved.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C is authority to widen the corridor at one twenty-five Country Drive in District Three to allow for safe travel of school buses.
Motion first.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, item A under my section would be.
Hold on, we got to get Mr. Tim Parker up here now, the county engineer. We don't leave it.
Can I, should I go sit down and start over?
Yeah, now let's go to our county engineer, Mr. Tim, Tim Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President, how are you this morning?
I'm doing good, how you doing?
Glad to be here.
All right, thank you.
Lucky to be here too, I guess. Item A is hydrologic restoration at Melamead, that's an ARPA project, program element four point oh nine. We recommend approval of payout number three from To Be Dirt and Contracting in the amount of ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eight cents and authority to issue that check.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Jay seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is on our live votes, ARPA project, program element number three point oh two. Recommend approval of change order number three, which is the summary change order in the amount of an increase of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Additional items required for property detention, hydrologic restoration on the project and to adjust the estimated quantities to actual final quantities. You can see the reasons for the change order. And this is basically, ended up being mostly pavement. They had to do street repairs, which we had set up in the project because we knew the haul of the rock was going to destroy some of the asphalt. So that's what that overrun is and this is a summary, this is a final change order for that.
I'll make a motion first.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, Mr. President, is on the same project, gets approval of payout number seven from Hodges Land Services in the amount of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-one cents. Authority to issue that check. I do want to point out that this is not the final pay request. They've got a little bit of work left to lay a little pipe. It was included in the summary change order, obviously, but the work hasn't been done yet. So there'll be another, there'll be a final pay request, but this is a partial pay request.
Where's the pipe that they got left?
It goes where the ditches come out from under the, out of the existing subdivision. One of those doesn't drain, the way the land is, the ditch cut from there to the main ditch, it doesn't have enough elevation to properly completely drain. So we're just installing a little eighteen-inch pipe to go from that tributary over to the next tributary, which is lower, so it can fully drain out. It'll handle probably ninety percent of the water now that's coming out from under the yards, but it just wouldn't handle it all. So we just are laying in a little additional eighteen-inch pipe to fully flush it out when the rain stops, for that whole water.
I'll make a motion first.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion?
Hey, one quick question. We were supposed to be looking at the state property that's beside that.
Yes, sir. I'll have something to tell you guys. I have a little bit of additional information about that.
Item D, Mr. President.
Hold on, we need to vote on that.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, Mr. President, we were requested to be removed from the agenda. We were expecting the contractor to furnish some final paperwork and we don't have that yet, so we'll just pull it and put it on the next agenda.
The minutes will reflect that item D under Tim's section is being passed, it'll be on the next agenda.
It's also in District Three.
No, sir, item D is in District One.
District One, okay.
Item E is Gun Road Improvement Project Phase Two. Recommend approval of payout number nine from Hip Bill Construction Company in the amount of five hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and nine dollars and forty-eight cents and authority to issue the check.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Made a motion, Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F is an ARPA project, program element two point oh two. Recommend approval of payout number four from Southeastern Pipeline Environmental Services in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty cents and authority to issue the check. That's a District Two project.
Submove.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, Mr. President, is River Forest Subdivision Part Four. Includes lots one twenty-nine through one fifty-eight. Recommend approval of those construction drawings and that's a District Five.
Uh, so we're all finished? It's probably Temple, Vernon Jones, yeah.
Yeah.
Most approved.
Second.
Jay made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? Got any further discussion, Mr. Gaines, you think?
Oh, no, we were just discussing that it was about thirty houses.
About thirty houses?
Oh, okay, no, nothing other than that.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
By May, Mr. President, under my sections, first item is to set a public hearing for January the thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, at nine AM for First Financial Bank. This is a nuisance consideration, five sixty-five Pisgah Road, it's a District Four. Potential nuisance, just need a motion to set that here.
Brad made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, item V and C are to set public hearings for the third of February at nine. You see those, Roy Anderson, conditional use, District Four. Bobby Elmore, conditional use, District Four. I'd ask for one motion on V and C.
Motion.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, item D is something that we routinely do. This is acknowledgement of PIN two oh seven eight nine. You see the parcel ID number there and the address. It reflects an unpaid abhorrent obligation. The principal amount is owed by the U.S. Secretary of Housing and Urban Development for abhorrent taxes effective one one sixteen. Acknowledgement that pursuant to those code sections, more than seven years has elapsed and so Rankin County is without the legal authority to collect that tax, abhorrent tax obligation. Even if it's owed, since it's a HUD property, there's no suggestion here that we have the right to tax the United States government. But to the extent that we possibly could maintain a claim, it's outside of our legal jurisdiction to collect it. So what we're doing is we're asking that the tax collector have the authority to correct her records to remove the reference to the sixteen abhorrent taxes on that PIN and authority to collect the current year abhorrent that is owed on that property. Just need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Jay seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, item E is a discussion of potential action on a request that we received from the city of Flowood. The request is to assist the city of Flowood to the extent that we are able to discover damages to its water and sewer infrastructure caused by contractors, home builders, who are constructing new residential or commercial structures in unincorporated Rankin County, but which are served by municipal water and sewer. It's a very narrow request. Anything that's inside the city of Flowood, they don't need our help with, obviously, because they're controlling all of that process. But there are situations where their municipal utilities extend beyond their municipal boundaries and they have the right to do that under state law into unincorporated Rankin County. And we have some new construction that comes online. What's happened in the past is that contractors, home builders, in the course of building a structure, they've done something to damage the utilities, either they or one of their subs. So the city is without the ability on the front end to know what is the state or condition of the utilities if they've been damaged until they flip the switch and turn the utilities on and they got leaks everywhere.
Well, how else are we going to?
Well, before we issue a CO, there would be a question asked of the person requesting the CO. Have you contacted the city of Flowood and allowed them to come do a inspection of their utilities before we issue the CO? I talked to Brian about it. I asked him to be prepared to address to you guys what impact that could possibly have on the Office of Community Development. It would be kind of a, you know, it is an imposition on the county and our staff to have to kind of monitor that or police that, at least at that level. But the idea would be, if we know on the front end, because we've got a permit for construction, right? That that's in unincorporated county and is served by the city of Flowood Utilities, that's one we need to flag before we issue the CO. We need for the city to be able to go out and do its inspection and determine that there's been no damage. And then the CO can be released.
Well, it gives drawbacks on that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of drawbacks, but these people are calling, builder calls for a final today. We go out and do the inspection, it passes, we call city of Flowood. Could take a day, a week for them to okay this. There's a lot of drawbacks, but the, these people are calling, builder calls for a final today, we go out and do the inspection, it passes, we call City of Flowood, could take a day, a week for them to okay this, uh, homeowner misses his window with the bank, those are issues we're worried about. Um, you know, we're ready to go, but they're calling us every day wanting to know when they're, they can get their CO. Um, I, I really don't know what to do with this, uh, we've thought about, uh, we've talked about maybe, uh, alerting them at the, uh, electrical final. Uh, that'll give them a little time before the CO, but still, grading and drainage is not complete most of the time, and that's the big issue, because once they lay that side, they've covered up a water meter, they've covered, they've covered up a manhole, so there's gonna be some, there's gonna be the, a delay in certificate of occupancies being delivered, they're just gonna have to understand that, I don't, there's, there's no perfect way to fix it.
Well, good news, it's not gonna be that many, so, but if we do, whenever we go out and do the CO, why don't we just notify Flowood, have them be on site when we do it? I would imagine if they want us to do this, they'll be pretty quick to respond.
And that's what we're hoping.
That's what we need, uh, that's what y'all need.
Right.
But we'll see, you know, once we start this, we can see how it's going, but we're gonna get a lot of nasty calls, I'm, I'm already expecting.
When there's damages, who is on the hook?
The builder?
The builder, the, the owner of the property? Or who, the builder?
The builder.
The answer is yes. Both, yes, sir.
All the above.
The, the property owner.
Aye.
Uh, because they own the property, but that could be the builder, uh, depends on who the property owner is.
But all of the contractors.
That we just proved, all those are gonna be.
Startable.
But it's not our responsibility, we're not, I mean, we're inspecting the house and the building.
We're just holding the CO.
Is it possible?
Holding the CO would require the homeowner and or the contractor to interface with the City of Flowood and get squared up.
Yeah.
So if they've damaged the utilities, they're probably gonna have to write a check to the City of Flowood to cover that cost of damage, then we release the CO.
Yeah.
Uh, this is all about a pressure point that the City of Flowood does not have, because they are not controlling when the CO issues, that's us.
Well, they could take full off subdivision.
Yes, sir, they can annex that property, that'd be a solution.
Brian, can we ask them if there is a, if they have this expectation of the county, you, community development, doing this, can we, can we ask of them twenty-four hour notice and you'll be on site with us for the CO?
Yeah, a- and we try to ask for a twenty-four now, uh, hour notice on our inspections, uh, anyway, to get a, so we're prepared, so, I mean, as soon as we find out, we can let them know. But like I said, you know, a lot of times these builders are calling us, hey, I, you know, they're waiting right now to sign off, they, they need the CO, they're, they're trying to close today.
Well, a builder, a builder should know that, hey.
They should.
This is gonna be the day we're gonna finish up, I, we need to get in the final inspection, I mean, they, they're not gonna wake up that morning sure that decide, hey, this day we need to get in the final inspection.
Be surprised.
I understand.
Yeah, we have a lot of last minute.
Just so y'all understand, this, this is not a mandate. This is not something that you guys have to do, City of Flowood has made a request, uh, they can't force us to participate in this, uh, we're, we're trying to figure out a way that we can be helpful and cooperative if it will not cause an undue burden on the county.
So is the Mason, is all that in City of Flowood, or is some of that in the county?
The Mason. Yeah, I don't know if any of that's in the county.
The Mason is not in the county.
It's all city, so the only one we're really worried about is River Forest, the one we just approved.
That's a player.
Is that not PRV, Jay? River Forest?
River Forest is not.
I don't know, they go up in there a good ways, I, I'm not sure where the line cuts off.
Yeah.
Is that Flowood? I'm assuming that's what it is.
Okay.
They wouldn't be asking.
Right, well, I, I, I wanna stress that, number one, if it's not the City of Flowood Utilities, we're not talking about this.
Yeah.
If it's PRV, that, PRV's not asking, uh, for some sort of precondition before issuance, so it, it has to be City of Flowood Utilities.
They must have issues out there.
We've, we've had them before.
Here too, and the, Brian, what's the one on the line, is, uh, Lofton and?
On the line?
Yeah.
Oh, let's see.
By the Redwater Department, that's gonna be one.
Yeah, um. Yeah.
We, we would do well, I think, and I'm not gonna tell these guys how to set this up, but I, I think we'd do well to have a map that shows what are the residential areas where you're gonna have this potential conflict, the City of Flowood is providing utilities, and it's unincorporated. What, what, just show me where those par- parcels are located, and my assumption is that we can get access through the City of Flowood to their specific maps that shows where their water and sewer facilities are located. And then try our best, as best we can, to simply highlight those on the front end, and, and I can work with Brian and with Ashley to try to come up with language that is on the building permit that says, please note, before a certificate of o- of occupancy is issued, you will have to have written certification from the City of Flowood that the water or sewer utilities are in good shape and ready to go.
Have that on the front.
Have it on the front end, have it on the permit, now that's, that's a headache, uh, it's, it, it essentially puts us in the position of having an obligation that we've inherited, that somebody over Flowood may want to suggest is a mandate, and that somehow the county is at fault, uh, th- there's a lot of potential problems here. It's, it's way too much information to put on a building permit, hey, this is not our responsibility, if you don't like the way this has worked out, call the City of Flowood, that's, that's too much information to put on there, and, and we won't ever be able to overcome that. So, we got a request, I'm bringing it before you guys, I asked Brian and Ashley to be prepared to tell you what the problems or challenges are, and now y'all get to make the hard decision. Are we going to incorporate this into our process, or are we gonna ask Flowood to live with it?
I'd say they're trying to find, you know, some backup on their end of, you know, to recover some cost and, and repairs on, you know, damages, uh, so I would assume Flowood would contact the building department if that occurs, because I'm, it's not gonna occur every, every house that's built, every, you know, project that, that goes on, so I, I would assume maybe on the ones that there is damage, they would call our office and, and say, hey, uh, hold up on the CO until they repair.
Yes.
You know, because I don't feel like this would, would be happening on every, every project that's out there, you know, and, and maybe, hey, on the ones that it does, you know, they'll call and say, hey, let's hold up on the CO, I'm having an issue with the developer or with the builder, you know, on it, you know, and it.
That's an excellent point that Sid's making.
It's.
We, we can establish what the precise process is, this request is broad. Hey, can y'all, can y'all pu- help us police this by forcing them to contact us before you issue the CO, we can say, yeah, we'll do that, and here's the rules we're gonna follow.
Right.
You're gonna get twenty-four hours to tell us that you've got an issue, and if we don't hear from you, we're issuing the CO.
Right, I, I think that would work better, because like I said, it's not gonna be that on every single project, and they were, they will know when, hey, if they contact us and say, hey, you know, hold up on the CO on lot twenty-two, you know, then we would know, and, and it's not any more extra work on our office or their office, either one, you know, unless there's an issue.
I think it'll work, I think it'll, it's a good system, if you think about it, you got builders trying desperately to get paid, and that closing's gotta happen before he gets paid.
Right.
He's gonna get straight with Flowood if that's what's holding up.
Right.
The closing, and so, uh, so the process has the potential to be effective, y'all just need to understand that this interplay with the county in an area that's really not our deal could potentially create friction with the city and with residents, I just, y'all need to understand that on the front end, we're gonna try to be helpful, but there is an issue here for us that we have to, to deal with.
What kind of motion or request?
Would it, would, would it be, would it be appropriate for the building department to talk with the City of Flowoods and come up with a process that both sides can kind of work with and then bring that back to the board?
Before they take action?
Brad, uh, to answer your question.
Are we going to mirror this across the county, because I would imagine other municipalities.
Well, before you only is the City of Flowood's request, uh, and the other issue with that is, um, eh, each municipality has its own gig going with respect to utilities. Uh, and, and I don't know, honestly, I don't know the extent of the extension of these utilities out beyond the current municipal boundaries, Brandon go more than a mile, or roughly a mile outside, it's an exterior utilities, so Brandon would probably, uh, fit this same pattern. Coppin and Pearl would fit this same pattern, uh, we know that Flowood does, uh, so Richland, Florence, Brandon Pearl, Flowood are likely to be, uh, Pilaachi has a, a good amount of, at least water, they don't have sewer, but water, uh, that extends, so that's possible, although we've not, we've not heard from any of the other municipalities.
Well, before we go change the world, why don't we just see how this works first?
Brad, to, to answer your question, what do we do, uh, what am I asking for, I'm asking for you to acknowledge that this request has been made, and secondarily to that, to authorize your building department to figure out what a process would look like, and as long as they can be satisfied that it's somewhat workable and not too much of an imposition, then it's, it's done, we're done, we'll just operate under that pattern, if, if the, if our building department can't get on the same page with City of Flowood, we'll need to bring it back in front of you guys, your conditioning.
Was this their public works or their attorney?
It, it came, it came through Paul Forster, through Rusty, Rusty is the one who reached out to me with the actual document. I, I had asked them to pass an ordinance, which actually has teeth in it, but they've chosen to go by way of a resolution, and you know, I, I, to, to my way of thinking, we don't really need to be too hard-nosed about trying to enforce something that's not our deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I could feel like y'all get with City of Flowood, sit down with Daniel, and see if y'all forget something to come back and present it to us, and what plan is.
I, I think a, a delay of twenty-four hours to give the city time to go conduct an inspection is more than adequate, and, and I think that's probably the best way for us to handle it. We will hold things up for twenty-four hours. The minute we send you an email saying this particular lot has requested a CO or is in line to get a CO, here's your twenty-four hour notice to get out and look at the utilities and report back to us, otherwise, we're issuing the CO.
That sounds good.
I think that's all they've really asked for, to be honest with you, that's, that's the sum total of it, so a brief delay like that should not be too much of an imposition.
Okay. We give them twenty-four hours?
Give them twenty-four hours.
Okay.
Y'all good with that?
You good with that?
We can do that.
If you hadn't heard, we'll tell you back. We should just see that.
Sounds good.
Brad, you, you good with that being your motion?
I'll second it.
Just Barry's gonna second that?
Yes, I am.
Brad made a motion, Scott seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, I'm gonna have, uh, litigation personnel, and we may have some other things that we're gonna be talking about in executive, so please be prepared.
Mister Hicks, come on up.
Thanks, sir.
Give us your report.
Uh, the first item is approval of payout number four and the final summary change order, this is from, uh, Fortosh Construction on the Terra Road Ditch Improvement Project, in the amount of twenty thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars, seventy-five cents, which is a reduction in the original agreement by over ten thousand dollars.
I can motion to approve.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Steve seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is approval of payout number four, uh, this is to Thornton Construction on our Reservoir East project, it's an ARPA project in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents, authority to issue that check.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Scott seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
See, that, this is not worthy of any other discussion, but I do wanna say, the people that live in this area that are going to be relieved, uh, have reached out, emails, phone calls, whatever, and thank the county for having this on our mind whenever the ARPA stuff coming around, because it's something we could have never touched. And this has been an ongoing for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, and getting worse, and, man, they're putting up with a lot of headache right now, because roads and their subsidies, but at the same time, it's worth it, and they really wanna thank the guys on this board for remembering them during that process.
Well, we're glad that there's programs out there and we're taking advantage of them, you know, get, get some programs done.
Once in a lifetime, John.
Right.
That's right.
Uh, the next item, item C is, uh, this is dealing with DFA and their increase in the mileage reimbursement rate, we're just asking the, the board to match that increase.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Jay seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is, uh, involving our website and moving forward on our website, let that sneak in for just a moment.
Microphone closure?
We, we finally got our, our attorneys out of the way, and we. But this is, uh, authority to execute a, a scope of work agreement with Rankin County and Wonderware, who is our current internet or website provider, uh, to implement some changes that we've requested, and I think the total cost is around fifteen thousand, uh, to move forward with this.
Make a motion to approve.
I'm happy to second that.
Steve made a motion, Scott was happy to second that motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have no additional business, uh, I do request a discussion of executive session based on land acquisition and possible personal.
Do we have any additional business? We have a need for, we get a motion for a need for executive?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, to discuss, uh, litigation, personnel, land acquisition, and might, might even another type personnel.
Steve made a motion for the need for executive session, Scott seconded that motion, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Now that I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Brad made a motion to go into executive session, Scott seconded that motion, any further discussion? All in favor?